It is now time for our regular city council meeting. We're going to call the meeting into order. I'm going to ask Alderman Colomir to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and I will give a brief introduction.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here together. You guide us as a community through ups and downs from a local, state, and national standpoint. We've experienced the attack on our democracy this last month with an attack in Alexandria, Virginia, and our hearts and our prayers go out to the friends and the families of those who have been impacted, as well as the many members of our civilization, of our society, of our neighborhoods, who have also been impacted by such viciousness. Father God, we are public servants and we come forward to serve your greater good. We are here for our citizens and it is only by your will and your judgment and your guidance that we provide the services that we need to provide. Father, help us this and every day to be the men and women that you call us to be. Please guide us this evening. May the thoughts, the words, the deeds, the expressions that are presented here this evening be those that you would have us to convey. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Citizens be heard. Okay, if y'all could be ready to speak after the person finishes, the first speaker is Randy Smith, followed by Manuel, and if you would give your full name and your address.
How y'all doing? I'm Randy Smith, 115 Bobcat Band. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. First, I want to give a belated thanks to the city, both the city council and the staff, for allowing us to have our Arbor Day this last April. It was a really nice event. As you know, I'm the chairman of the Chavano Park Tree Committee, and so we helped with that event. It's a great city-sponsored event and it was good to see all of our neighbors out there. We were fortunate to have decent weather and I think a good time was had by everybody. So, we're entering into this next month, on July 1st, our summer tree trimming month season, and I wanted to just let everyone know that we, as the Tree Committee, are advocating good tree trimming practices. So first of all, we've made some changes this year that, or the city's made changes, to allow a citizen to get a permit, which is good not just through the summer trimming season, but also till the end of the year. So as a citizen, it's a better deal. You can get the permit and it lasts till the end of the year. You can trim a little at a time. We would encourage also all other citizens that use services to have their, the service that they choose to come, get permitted properly, and make sure they follow the rules. So one of the things that, one of the things that we produced, actually courtesy of Louise Chumley and her husband, were some refrigerator magnets that tell you permit, prune, and paint. And those are the three key things we'd like to promote as far as good oak wilt prevention. So these are available. We passed them out during the Arbor Day event. We've got another batch here that we'll be happy to make available here at City Hall if anyone would like them. So these are just a reminder of what months when oak tree trimming is allowed and what you should do to make that happen. I'd also like to give a special thanks to Rondi Whalen, who chaired our Chavano Park Tree Committee Arbor Day Subcommittee. She did a lot of work along with the city in getting that done, and again, it was a good time for everybody. So, thanks.
Thank you, and congratulations to both the Tree Committee and to Randy. Thank y'all very much. And well, and Tommy Payton, Tommy, if you'd be prepared to speak next.
Good evening. My name is Manuel Velazquez. I live at 105 Pepper Bush. I've been a resident here for 37 years, a long time. I want to talk about the portable buildings that we're going through right now with the ordinances, and I am totally against the eight-foot height that is required. I think it should be at least up to 12, 10 or 12. And if you walk, if you drive around the neighborhood, you'll see a lot of houses that have their storage buildings on the setback property lines, all over town. So I don't know why, I just can't put mine where I want to put it, you know what I mean? But other than that, I just think we should be able to do with our property what we want to do. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Tommy. And then behind Tommy will be Mary Warner. Mary, if you'd be prepared to speak. Is she here?
Mayor, council members, good evening. I just want to-
Tommy Payton, and where do you live?
Oh, Tommy Payton, and where I live. I live at 121 Chavano Drive. Sorry about that. I just want to voice my opposition to changing the setback rules. It's been a long time since they were changed, but they were changed from 50 to 30 on the old side here. But I just don't feel that we should have the encroachment of any permanent type of accessory or storage buildings on our setbacks, and I would like to voice my opinion against that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mary Warner, followed by MJ Smoot.
Evening, Councilman and Mayor. I'm Mary Warner. I live at 310 Fawn Drive, and I will be short and sweet tonight. I know that'll be unusual. Anyway, I want to talk with Council regarding the setback. Allowing a 12-foot, 360-small, one-car garage to be placed five feet from the property line is absurd to me. We have worked hard on keeping an image of this city, and personally, I don't care what Bear County allows. I don't live in Bear County. I live in the city of Chavano Park, where we all have wanted to keep a certain image of this city. We have residents who believe we should keep the trees, do this and that, and why wouldn't we want the overall picture of the city to be the same for my neighbor across the fence from me? 12 feet high with an eight-foot fence, we've gone through this with the RVs, if you remember those discussions. We raised the fence from six feet to eight feet to help block anyone. If you're going to go with a 12-foot building next to, I would oppose looking at that. The current neighbors would not like that. I've spoken with several neighbors and residents throughout the city. They do not care for that. And the only other thing is on the BOA. If you give the exception to the BOA, like I told the planning and zoning, you're going to make that board a very powerful board. We know that their decisions are final. We have had lawsuits based on those decisions or threatens of lawsuits to this city. I caution y'all, y'all were voted to use your wisdom and what is best for the city overall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. MJ Smoot is followed by David Pierce. David, if you'd be prepared to speak after MJ finishes.
MJ Smoot, 101 Chavano Drive, 7231, 21 years as you know. The Arbor Day Committee members' names were the best kept secret around here this year. Our names were not mentioned once until after the event. Of course, I take that personally, but I'm happy that because of that, I think Arbor Day was slightly less political. A review meeting was held afterwards, which three of us were not invited to. At our committee meeting of recent, the report was read and completed, and I asked for the financial report. I felt attacked. The reply was, "What money?" We didn't have any money. We do have the July 1st upcoming event. I was offered that I would receive that, and it's not so much that I receive it, but it's that the citizens receive it. On July 1st, the event coming up, as with all our events, I believe that citizens deserve a financial report on our money. You spend it, but it comes from the citizens, and again, they, we deserve a report. I would like to see the bulletins for the events at the bottom have "Sponsored by Taxpayer Money," "Paid for by Citizens of Chavano Park," something to that effect, I think would be nice and appropriate, and then of course, the financial report following the event. What I heard verbally on the financial report, that we spent about $2,000, so there's about $3,000 left, and I want to know where that money's going. Disappointed is the number-one word that described the election this year by many citizens that I speak to. The actions of this council, individual and as a whole, are very disappointing. I wanted to serve and do my civic duty for a few years, but seeing as how you conducted yourselves, it makes me think there's a goldmine at the bottom of this volunteer position. I really do not get your reaction and actions in working day and night to keep me out. Committees unanimously votes are preferred. That means yes-men to me. While I was campaigning, a person told me that they were on the P&amp;Z 30 years and that the city attorney told them, the committee, that they had to vote for the gas station. I spoke to the prior mayor, which he adamantly denied. I don't know who's telling the truth, maybe y'all know. If this city is being run by one or two people and not the citizens, where are we included in the decision-making process and not after? Please let me know. Y'all have my contact info. I also received an anonymous letter asking me to change sides. The answer is no, I remain with the citizens. Even if we are not in power and empowered, I remain with the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. David will be followed by Maggie.
Mayor, Council, David Pierce, 118 Fawn Drive. I apologize, I didn't see my colleagues from the Tree Committee here. I just kind of rushed in, but I wanted to say, I took some magnets and walked down the street because I knew some of my neighbors didn't go to Earth Day, and they really appreciated them, and I had a positive response. And one neighbor called me today asking if you had a list of preferred tree companies, actually, that were trustworthy, so that might be, and he said he'd called Public Works, but they didn't really have an answer for him, so perhaps we could do something like that. And what else? And one neighbor didn't like the permit fee. He was kind of a non-fee guy, but anyway, but at least it brought it to their attention. And that's all I wanted to say. I think it was a positive thing, and that's it. Thank you.
Dave, thank you very much. Maggie?
Hello, Maggie Kautz, 122 Mossy Cup West, and I too enjoy Arbor Day, and I thought it was great, and I thought it was great for the city. I'm here to speak about the regulations and the proposals of changing them. Again, I want to say, as an aside, the Planning and Zoning Committee is one of the most well-thought-out group of folks I've ever seen, and they truly look at both sides. They truly look at what's happening. I've been to several of the meetings, and I'm glad I'm not on that committee. But in view of what's happening, I understand the people wanting to make changes to their property. I come from 45 years of living in Houston that has had a no zoning law, had no rules, no regulations, only if in certain areas you had homeowners' association rules, and they were fairly, very powerful because they had, that was the only thing they had to go by. I caution you, from my experiences there and from being the president of a couple of the associations during my time, it's very difficult, and I realize that. But you must have rules and you must have regulations. It's not going to please everybody, but you have to look at the total view, and I'm sure everyone knows that. We started out as a rural community, and that was different. We're now not that rural community. We like our ruralness, but yet we've still got to keep up with the times, and we have a varied community now, and for that, we have to have, we have to look at the overall. So I just say very carefully to take a look at it. The changes, I know, are things that people would like to have, but just look at it cautiously. We must have rules. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item four, City Council comments. Mike?
Thank you for coming.
Michelle?
Thank you for coming.
Bob?
Thank you for coming. Great crowd tonight.
Mike?
Thank you for coming. Glad to see everybody here.
Okay, that brings us to item 5.1, Presentations, Commendations, and Announcements. And we have something absolutely amazing that has happened in this community. In the 30 years that Mary and I have been here, it has never happened to one of our citizen students. We have a U.S. Presidential Scholar recipient in our community, and she is here this evening. I'm going to ask Gabriella Escalante, her sister, and mother's and father, Dr. Del Rincon, and Dr. Escalante to come forward, and I bet that Sam would videotape that for you, Dr. Escalante, or Curtis, or Ray Lacy. How about Ray Lacy, right next to you? Come on up here, Curtis is going to get some pictures with y'all as well. Jennifer, would you mind explaining what the medal is that you're wearing today and why you have received it?
Yes, so this medal is from Washington, D.C., and it was given to the 161 recipients of the U.S. Presidential Scholarship. And it's a very competitive process, and it's the way for the President to recognize the top Texas graduating seniors who chose him on the basis of receiving a, or actually scoring a perfect SAT score. And then from there, it's a lengthy application, and I have a lot of support from my family and my teachers at school, and I'm really grateful for all of that. And yeah, it was just an honor. I was just came back from Washington, D.C., and got to meet Congressman Wellard, and Senator John Cornyn, and actually, the first lady, Melania Trump, so that was really exciting. And it was great to be here. Thank you for honoring me.
Well, you are in a very special situation. There are millions of high school seniors this year, and there are only 161 that have been recognized, and from the academic standpoint, I understand that there are only two in Texas.
Yes.
There's one guy, and then there's two.
There's one male from Texas and one female from Texas.
And I know that you're very, very smart, because I've talked to your parents before, but I also know that you put in an extraordinary amount of dedication to the craft of being a student. And you're going to be heading off to Harvard.
Yeah.
We are all very pleased that you're going to be going to Harvard. We're excited for you, and maybe you can send some of that cold weather down here for us in at least one or two days, and we'll send that 80-degree weather back to you from San Antonio to New York.
I'll be there.
But I have a proclamation here. Whereas the United States Residential Scholar Program was enacted in 1964 by executive order of the President to recognize the nation's most distinguished graduating seniors, and whereas since this program's inception, more than 7,000 of the nation's top-performing students have been honored with this prestigious award during an annual ceremony held in Washington, D.C. And whereas on May 5th, the U.S. Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, announced the selection of Gabriella Escalante of Chavano Park, Texas, who attended St. Mary's Hall as a 2017 U.S. Presidential Scholar. And whereas Gabriella is one of 161 outstanding American high school seniors who have demonstrated outstanding academic achievement, artistic excellence, leadership, citizenship, service, and contribution to school and community. Now therefore, being proclaimed, I, Robert Warner, Mayor of the city of Chavano Park, Texas, am honored to present this proclamation to Gabriella Escalante in recognition of her outstanding economic achievements as a student at St. Mary's Hall, and for being honored by the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program for her leadership, scholarship, and contributions to her school and our community. Great, perfect job. Well done. Congratulations. Yes, we have some more. I want to recognize the people who take care of the American Spirit Alliance. Doug, do I have a representative here this evening? Doesn't look like Angie made it. These are the people that put out the flags along Northwest Military. There are hundreds of volunteers that do this. If you have not signed up, there are probably still opportunities, because they sign people up on July the 1st. So please, 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 think about coming down and participating in that flag ceremony. They put them about every 10 yards for several miles, and it's inspiring. The next thing is to recognize our esteemed Laura Favors. Laura, come on up. Bill, come on up and say a couple of really nice things about Laura. Laura is being recognized as a distinguished budget award winner. Laura has been quite a prize for the city of Chavano Park. She is the president of her association, or was the president?
Not well, the-
Of the region, yes. But this is the distinguished budget presentation award presented to the city of Chavano Park, Texas, and we could not have done this without Laura. Bill, would you say a few things?
Well, I'll just say that putting the pledge together is not an easy task. It is probably the most important thing that we, and really, the city council both on a manual basis. It's a policy document, it's an operational document, it's a financial document, and it's an economic document, and it serves multiple communications tool to the citizens who can see what's going on. So it provides multiple purposes, and in order to accomplish all that, someone's got to orchestrate that, and that is Laura. Now, to earn the Government Financial Officers Association Award in recognition, there's a number of things that have to be done, so there's extra steps that have to be taken. Our budget is then sent to a board, and there are three peers that evaluate that against the checklist, and this is the second year enrolled that we've made it, and so it's not easy, but I'll tell you what, Laura has been adding detail and detail and transparency down into all the line items. She does an excellent job, and so it's well-earned. It's really well done.
Laura, congratulations, and I thank you on behalf of the city and the citizens and the staff of Chavano Park. Okay, we have one more of our staff members that we'd like to recognize, and I'm going to ask Bill to come up as well. Brandon, do you-
Brandon may not look very young, but, or may not look very old.
He's actually kind of young, except that Brandon has a decision of burning the candle for this for this community, and we appreciate everything that he has done. He is going to be instrumental in the completion of our cicada system and so many more things. Brandon is just a few months away from receiving your engineering license?
No.
Oh, no? Not a few months? Okay, well, he has an engineering degree from Texas Tech, which I'm very proud of at Texas Tech. I've got a few degrees from there for military. But we are so, so pleased to have you with the city. Tommy Payton was here earlier. Tommy would remember when we hired our first professional engineer, our first engineering major, to be a part of our staff, and we, I've worked with every single public administrator since, and not a single one of them can hold a candle to you, Brandon. You do an absolutely remarkable job, and the efforts that you put on, on behalf of our city, the very, very, very long hours and the times that you come back up here at 2:00 to take care of the infrastructure problems that we may have. I believe that it is a labor of love from you to us, and I can tell you that our community returns that sentiment to you, that you are loved by so many of our community members, especially the ones who I believe in. So, hey, thank you so very much, and I look forward to recognizing you later on. Bill?
I'd like to say a couple words, and kind of, what is, what are we really talking about? First of all, you know, police and fire need a lot of visibility, and you see people working around. And I'll say this publicly, I think that Brandon has the hardest, most difficult job in the entire city staff environment, because of the complexities of being down there with the servicemen, knowing their job and directing them, but also the highest level of directing strategy. Okay, I don't know if you know this, but on May 30th, the lightning strike occurred, it was Tuesday afternoon, and we had damage, civic damage to the Hughner Ground Station, which is fed by well 78 outside of the city. It damaged the verbal frequency drives as well as the cicada system. That night, he worked on that from 4:00 to 11:00, just to get water pumped into the storage tanks. I'm not going to go over all this stuff, but that was on a Tuesday night. Wednesday night, alarms started happening. Wednesday morning, at 4:00 a.m., he was here the next morning fixing that system. That Saturday, we had more issues, beginning at 3:00 a.m., and he worked specifically during the day on Saturday. Sunday morning, 5:00 a.m., Monday morning, 5:00 a.m., Tuesday, just before 6:00 a.m., later Tuesday night, from 9:00 p.m. to 11:40. And he started getting that system working, and what happens is all the price bill hit and everyone's water. Okay? You recall that we're missing two water servicemen's spots, so it's Brandon and a new hire that's doing, Brandon essentially is single-handedly keeping the water system going. I thought that was pretty impressive, and in fact, I said that that in itself, if I was back in the military like I was for 30 years, that would earn, not an Army Achievement Medal, it would earn Accommodation Medal just by itself. Well, that week was outdone by the week afterwards, in which, not this Monday, but a week ago, he started, well, I'll start with that Tuesday. At 10:15 at night, alarms in the system got to be critical mass. He didn't get back home until 3:00 a.m. The next night, he had meeting mode Monday and Tuesday night until 9:30 into 9:00 p.m. On Thursday, he came in at 11:20, left Thursday at 2:00 a.m. On Friday, he got home at 7:00 p.m. Friday night after that long week. Saturday, he came in and did water. He did the water runs, came in and back in at 2:50, didn't leave until 6:00 p.m. On Father's Day, he did water runs from 7:00 to 9:00, came in again at 5:00 o'clock and did not leave on Father's Day until 11:00 p.m. So incredible performance, second to none. Brandon, you have our respect.
Michelle, could you tell us something about the Arbor Independence Day, and Bill may have something to add?
Yes, Independence Day this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 at City Hall. We're all very excited. We hope the weather holds out. This year, we've added pony rides, which should be a lot of fun, and lots of games and prizes, the usual, and there's obviously a pet parade, and you can bring any well-behaved pet. Someone brought a chicken last year. Whatever you happen to have, you're welcome to bring it. Anyway, it should be a really good time. We'll have food trucks and hope to see everybody there.
Yeah, Little Red won the most patriotic pet last year, so-
Yes.
We can hope to see some more of Little Red. Bill, do you have anything else to add?
Only that we had a pony ride at a similar event about three weeks ago at another organization I'm at. One girl rode the pony eight times. And it's a very popular event, especially for young kids.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item 6.1, Discussion/Action Preliminary Plaid Establishing Chavano Park Unit 19C. Phase Four, Huntington, a 32.86 acre tract of land out of a 289.5 acre tract described in a deed to Rogers Chavano Park Unit 1819 Limited. Bill, do you want Dan to start without you?
I'll just do the intro. He can give the specifics. Just to kind of go through the piece, this is a preliminary plaid, means it's the first time you've seen this, but it has gone through planning and zoning. We received a request for the preliminary plaid on the May 1st, so we've been working this through May 1st, and we did all the required things. We had a preliminary plaid conference. It went before the city engineer. There was a number of comments associated with that. Those comments were mostly reflected and adjusted before the Planning and Zoning Commission. It went before- Subsequent to that, additional corrections were made, and the bottom line is they've fulfilled the requirements, and it's been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the specifics of this, this is in addition to a Huntington street, and I'll turn it over to Dan, who represents the firm that submitted it.
Thank you, sir. It's really just another phase of Huntington. I think it's 27 lots, if I'm not mistaken. It's been engineered by Pape Dawson. We do have kind of little odd little street there, but that was the only way we could work it to make that intersection at... It's on a screen at the moment, but I really don't have anything to add. It's just another plaid for Chavano 19C Phase 4 or the Huntington subdivision.
Okay. How many lots are you adding?
27, I believe.
27, okay. And that's going to lead how many?
I think 50.
Okay, very good. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve preliminary plaid establishing Chavano Park Unit 19C Phase 4 Huntington, 32.86 acre tract of land out of a 289.5 acre tract described in a deed from Rogers Chavano Park Unit 1819 Limited. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Bob has seconded the motion. We're open for discussion. Is there any discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. So that these guys might leave by unanimous consent, I would request that we bring forward item 8.5, approval of final plaid establishing Pond Hill East Commercial Subdivision. Do I have the unanimous consent?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion concerning the approval of the final plaid?
I move we approve the final plaid for Pond Hill.
Okay. Michelle has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike Simpson has seconded the motion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you. Okay. Item 6.2, Public Hearing, Receive Testimony and Comments from Members of the Public Regarding Proposed Amendments to Chapter 6 and Chapter 36 of the City's Code of Ordinances Regarding Accessory Buildings, Outbuildings, and Portable Buildings and the Authorization of Special Exceptions. It is now 7:11. We're going to open the public hearing. Bill, I'm going to recognize you as a presenter and Mike Jansen and Buddy Alamon as secondary presenters.
Just for background and the general audience, the Planning and Zoning Commission's actually been working this since November 4, 2015. So I'll skip forward to almost... Well, over a year later, in January of 2017, there was actually a proposed ordinance that came forward, and that was as a result of a number of public hearings. The slide behind you there really summarizes some of the changes made by Planning and Zoning after the 2016 public hearings, which removed a limit on the number of accessory buildings. Right now, most of the city, you're limited to, you know, you may be limited to one or some limitation associated with that. Removed the primary residence square footage as a limitation to size of accessory building. Changed 16-feet height limit to one-story. Changed the accessory building definition to specify accessory buildings are four-wall enclosed buildings, and that removes some confusion. And we removed stables and animal shelters from accessory buildings. Also, added in masonry requirements of 60% in all your zoning districts, 60% in A1 and 75% in the other ones, for any accessory building over 300 square feet. And there was a deleted section as described as not to be obstructive or inappropriate in design and coverage. So that was a draft version, and some of those changes went back to the way it originally is and so... But those were as a result of public hearings. So subsequent to that, there was an ordinance, a draft ordinance in January presented to the council. Council made... Approved that ordinance with two changes. Number one, they eliminated that one section requiring masonry requirements of 60% and 75%. Second, there was a proposal to adopt new regulations for the A3 zoning district, and you can read through that, maximum size no larger... This is for portable buildings, 350 square feet, can be set in but not attached to concrete sidewall more than eight feet, no more than eight feet, maximum height no more than 12 feet, and located no closer than five feet to the rear and side setbacks. Next slide, let's see what that one is. This required public hearings. There was some dialogue back and forth in public between the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I'll just kind of summarize, these are my words. You have two opposing viewpoints. You've heard some of that today. Some folks don't want anything in the setbacks. Some folks believe it's their own property rights to have things in the setbacks. A possible... Basically, a compromise was discussed over several months and then proposed, which allowed for a new proposed special exception, which kept... Which keeps, generally speaking, fairly restrictive ordinances and guidelines similar to what they are now, but then allows for exceptions. And the difference between special exceptions and variances, it's pretty significant in terms of... A variance can be approved, but there's eight pretty difficult actions that must be met or measures that must be met. The one primary one is the condition that you're asking a variance for cannot be created by the property owner. So if you build something somewhere and you want a variance, that's creating a condition that you're creating. So it's very difficult to get a variance. In fact, it's the strict court interpretation and the letter of law these days means that it's only on very few exceptions can you get a variance. However, working with the attorney, we have proposed successfully already in our ordinance a limited number of special exceptions in the setbacks where you can go into your setback if you back into a green belt or a major throwaway like Northwest Military Highway, De Zavala, or the San Antonio city limits or a green belt. So we've done that successfully. We've actually had two requests and two hearings, and both of these special exceptions were granted. A proposal was provided to Planning and Zoning. The proposal for special exceptions pretty much mirrored the amendment from... That was offered from Alderman Heisel and which included allowing portable buildings no greater than 350 square feet and so forth. So that was pared down, and Planning and Zoning actually took that draft language, reduced that to 200 square feet. But you can read down there that this special exception would allow one portable building no greater than 200 square feet when it meets the following requirements. Sidewall heights no greater than eight feet, the building's maximum height no greater than 12 feet, five foot from the property line. And it expanded the special exceptions to not only A3, but to A1, A2, A3, A4, A5. And also would allow accessory building exterior walls to have less than 60% masonry by special exception. And so that was based upon several things. Conditions for special exceptions. And so the reason why I'm going over this, because, and I probably should have mentioned this, is when Planning and Zoning did the public hearing and they considered the ordinance that was approved by a city council with those two items that were done, they voted to disapprove that and then voted subsequently to approve special exceptions. So that's why I'm going over that. But it's important to understand the conditions for granting special exceptions. And so in this case, it's done very similar to a Board of Adjustment variance request in that there's written notice and public notice provided, and there's... You can see here, there's seven criteria that are established, three and seven being the ones that I've highlighted in blue, provide the significant information that there is a hearing date and there is a public hearing, and citizens that are surrounding that property are also notified in writing so that they have a chance and they're tracking. The Board of Adjustments typically goes out and looks at the property and determines what's going on. But at the hearing date, correct... Conditions for granting it, that there's no foreseeable... It's not foreseeable the special exception will substantially impair or diminish presently permitted neighborhood uses, values, or enjoyment of neighboring properties. And the seventh item was that the special exception will not result in such property being incompatible with other properties within the zoning district. So really, it gives pretty large latitude to the Board of Adjustments, but it would have to be based upon a hearing where citizen input was provided from both sides. Is there another slide, or is that it? Okay, so I think that summarizes that, and probably Chairman Jansen and...
Mike, Buddy, y'all have anything that you'd like to come up and add for us?
Mike Jansen, Planning and Zoning. I always have something to say. I guess the bottom line is when we sent you the previous ordinance back in January, and y'all recommended two changes back to Planning and Zoning. One, I'm dealt with the masonry requirement, and one I'm dealt with buildings over eight feet in the setback. And we worked and worked. We had spirited discussion. We had many citizens come up and talk to us. Many citizens attended our meetings. And I like to say we heard those citizens and we felt really... And I'm sure from the citizens that we heard tonight, that we really heard conflicting views. Some citizens want their property as it is now. They bought their property with an eight-foot height limit, and they didn't want that expanded to 12 feet. And then we heard others, as you heard tonight, that want their private property rights. They want to be able to do whatever they want. Now, obviously, there are always restrictions and limitations on that because nobody wants a manufactured house next to their house. I mean, you're always going to have restrictions and setback requirements. But the bottom line is, we tried to address those two items that stood out from city council to where there were disagreements. So we did that with special exception language, as you know. We felt, I think the commission felt it was the fairest way is we would get citizen input. We heard that a lot of citizens are in favor of it. If they're in favor of it, there shouldn't be a problem getting a special exception. I've attended the Board of Adjustment meetings. I found to be very well-attended by citizens that have a problem and as well as very well-run by the Board of Adjustment. So I think that that's a good avenue to hear both sides of the argument. And so that's what we did. We tried to present it with a Board of Adjustment. We did hear, and this isn't in the ordinance because it's outside our purview, but we heard comments that it costs $350 to go to Board of Adjustment. And we did, in our meeting, we asked Bill to please look into it. Maybe that could be reduced to something lesser so citizens wouldn't have a financial penalty for having to go through the Board of Adjustment to get this done, and I'm sure he'll do that and present something to y'all.
Okay. Buddy, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Mike, if you would stay over close in case there are citizen questions that are directed to you, I would appreciate it.
Buddy Alamon, Planning and Zoning. Just two things, Mr. Mayor. One of the things is that we reduce the 60% masonry based on comments from Alderman Ross, allowing us to do stainless steel and glass. And that was part of the special exception, that that would open it up so if it was a quality material, that they could do that. And the second item is, is that we made sure that we didn't take away any property rights from the citizens that they originally had when they bought the property. So they're not losing anything. In fact, all we're doing is creating requirements that allows them to keep the property, you know, amongst the citizens of Chavano Park on the requirements that are set by y'all. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to open it up for citizen comments and questions. Please limit yourself to one presentation. We have a number of people here this evening, and so please get your comments in and your questions in your one time. Who would like to be recognized first? Jason. Jason, if you'd come forward and tell us who your... What your name is and where you live, and that would help us.
All right. Jason Linehan, 113 Chavano Drive. You guys may have seen me before, but I'm here to speak tonight on accessory buildings. These are the ones that would be permanent, permitted, constructed to code, habitable spaces such as pool houses, workshops, detached garages, guest houses, all conforming with the setback requirements. I know in all the previous hearings, sometimes we wander into confusing the two, but we're talking about value-add structures. And you guys made some changes based on all of the public hearings and the comments in the January meeting that I'm asking you to uphold today. I think that the 60% or 75% masonry requirement in meeting with the working group, and we've talked through it, they were clear that you guys are the only ones that could change that percentage for an accessory building. But designed today, there's so many neat things that can be done in the back of your property, whether it's a modern farmhouse, whether it's a rustic log cabin. I mean, my uncle in Chavano Creek has a log cabin because HOA approved it. Lake Flatos designs. I mean, there's things that are well outside of mason... Required masonry that can look good in someone's backyard, that isn't a cost burden, something that's 300, 400, 500 feet in the back of somebody's property that's barely visible. It's not upholding value just to have masonry on it. One of the things I will ask you, if you're not inclined to reapprove that ordinance, is one, Commissioner Jansen mentioned it, I think there should be a lower fee, but secondly, there's a provision in the ordinance that talks about the mason requirement closely resembling the existing structure. I have a house that was built in 1947. I have fieldstone rock that looks like it was picked up in a field somewhere. I don't know how to match it. So what is closely resemble? Who's going to interpret it? Is it tan stucco? Is it a brick in similar color? Is it a limestone? You know, who's to say that a complementary or an alternative solution, something that's totally opposite, isn't the right response architecturally? So my point in all of this is that the city's wading into design. I don't like the special exception avenue because I think it creates an architectural control committee for the accessory buildings, and I'd ask that you consider that and take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Do we have anybody else? Walt, if you'd give us your name and where you live.
I'm Walt Sanderson. I live at 113 Broken Bow. I want to thank everybody for paying so much attention. My issue is portable buildings. Of course, you all heard this more than once. I'm going to go over it again. Mike, I really appreciate the effort. I know you all put a lot, a lot, a lot of work in. I do appreciate it. And I appreciate Mary's comments as well. You know, diversity is a good thing. It always comes up with a good resolution. One of the things that was said and said repeatedly is that these restrictions were already in place. If that's so, then why does this building exist? That's my question. We see these all over the city. They're 12, even 14 feet high. The restrictions do not exist. They've not been enforced for 20 years. And an ordinance that's not regularly enforced is not enforceable. So people don't stop when they buy a house. We've got people in the real estate business here. They don't stop and read all the ordinances. They drive down the street. And if they see these kind of buildings, they reasonably assume that they can do it. And generally, it's true, especially if they're built recently. There's one on the corner of Broken Bow, my street, and Military Drive. It's a building, I don't know, it's 200, 300... It's 200 square feet. It's got a porch on the front. They... Last week, they put a metal roof on it. And that's kind of my point. If you give the people the latitude, they'll go ahead and make a nice building. But the portability is just... You know, my request is for 350 square feet or larger. Right now, Section 3636B, forgive me, Rondi, I'm going to show your RV here, allows for this. It's Rondi's RV, and it could be screened, maybe. I don't know. But it's 14 feet high. RVs can be as much as 382 square foot. It's allowed today. So there's not a significant difference between putting a building, a storage building, or one of these. 12 feet taller or higher, up to 14 feet. These are allowed 14 feet tall. Constructed on a concrete foundation. Portable means... or one of these. 12 feet taller, taller, higher, up to 14 feet, these are allowed 14 feet tall, constructed on a concrete foundation. Portable means poor foundation, that's what it means. And there's no reason for it. Regulations have to have at least some goal, and the regulation must reasonably accomplish that goal. And so the notion that they're portable has not ever been defended. That's my issue, give me a reason. They talk about safety, it takes five feet to drag a fire hose back there. We're not driving a hook and ladder truck back there for a variety of reasons, among trees, power lines, and fences. Sidewall of 18 feet, the concrete foundation provides a solid construction consistent with that of the home. Five feet from the lot line, today you can build a portable building on the lot line. Go by the corner of Broken Bow and Military Drive, it's hard to tell without a survey, I'm usually pretty good at it, but you really have to have a survey. That building is built right on the privacy fence, and then there's a fence next to it. It's less than five feet from the fence line. Today's restriction does not even address it, you could build it right on the fence line. So that was my input. The car storage on Honeybee, you know, these restrictions, I know they were, forgive me, I wanted to set that down. You know, I've kind of been there, you, you, an issue comes up and you're on a board, I've been on several boards, and so you fix it. Makes sense, you fix it, it seems right. And then the law of unintended consequences sets in, and you realize, oh my gosh, that's not quite what I meant it to be. The car storage on the corner of, on Honeybee, Buddy referred to it as the airplane hangar, it's a pretty good sized building.
No, that's...
There's another one, okay. Well, there was one built and there were complaints. It was 99% compliant. It was turned a little bit, and so it was eight inches inside the setback on one side and eight inches inside on the setback, on the other side. The complaints had nothing to do with that. The complaints were the size and the color. That's what the, and the size and the color was basically consistent with the ordinance of an accessory building. And so my point is that I believe that those complaints were a result of the excessive regulations. I think you've created a Frankenstein here. The regulations are not a product of the complaints. I believe that complaints are a product of the excessive regulation, they're unnecessary. Regulations need a goal and a reasonably need to accomplish that goal. One of the things that was being brought up is a diminution of value. Y'all know, I'm a real estate appraiser, I do condemnation work. That is the focus of my business, how much diminution of value is there? No one has provided any evidence whatsoever that there is such. Item three in the variance, I can't remember what you called it, the other variance option, it talked about diminution of the value next door, but it doesn't talk about, thank you so much, talks about the neighbor values. Well, you're creating a diminution of value of the property that you're putting the regulation on. That's my point. Talked about the fire hose, you know, I don't like it, that's not a reason for a regulation. It has to be identifiable, and the regulation has to accomplish that goal, otherwise it's arbitrary. I don't like it's not a reason. So please confirm the changes made, requested by the citizens, I'm reading from my list here, requested by the citizens in the petition previously provided, and confirm the changes made by Alderman Simpson in the previous meeting to Section 3636 and the other sections that was previously approved unanimously by this council. Special exceptions, we've already bought up the $350 fee, I think it's excessive. I am not for special exceptions, I think that the citizens have this right. And I think if you do have a special exception and you allow one person to do it and another per, I'm not picking on the mayor, it's another person to do it, you tell them they can't do it, my gosh, you're just creating ill will. And that is not the function of the council. I just think that, I think it's a recipe for disaster. Mr. Linehan's accessory buildings, I don't have a need to build an accessory building now, but point is previously made, they're behind the front fence, you can't see them from the street. They're located behind the house, only him and his, you ought to see his kids, they're absolutely beautiful. They're about the only ones that can see it, I'm sure they won't complain about that. It can be, the better, I can be the same or better quality as a house without masonry requirements. Accessory building can be the same or a better quality as the home without a masonry requirement. And it can be of worse quality than the home with a masonry requirement. It's not accomplishing the goal, that's my point. So I don't think you can legislate bad or good taste, I just leave it alone. I think that's about it, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Walt. Do we have any other citizens who would like to speak? Okay, Mary, would you come forward and give us your full name and where you live?
I'm Mary Werner, I live at 310 Pond Drive. This is a very hard decision and hard work. P&amp;Z had it, y'all have it tonight, and again, I come before you to stay. It's not out of disliking or liking, there may be a few of them, that's our problem with enforcing our ordinances, we've had that problem for years. Who knows, those residents that he showed may have gotten an exception, we don't know the answer tonight. As I stated before, I live on acreage, I don't have a problem with that, but I do know my neighbors who have lived here longer than I have would object for me to put a building suddenly five feet from the property line. We're not talking about setback line, we're talking about what is being proposed is five feet from the property line. That's what I have an issue with. Accessory buildings, portable buildings, it's all necessary. But if you need something that much more than what we currently have in our ordinances and allowed to be in our ordinances and have been updated, then maybe you need to get a storage unit. There's one right around the corner, and that's a reasonable rate for there. It's not about what I want or my neighbors want, it is about the overall, the usage of our property. I have property rights just as someone else, and if they want to put a five-foot building, I mean, a five, a building five feet from my property, I have the right to enjoy my property. We're not talking about just acreages, we're talking about the residents over here that have smaller lots. Those of us who own big lots, yeah, it wouldn't bother. And you cannot dictate, you cannot legislate good taste, because like I stated in P&amp;Z meeting, I drive around this city a lot in my business, and I see good intentions going haywire. I see 10 buildings rotten down, I see buildings that they buy at Home Depot falling apart, I see fences falling apart. You cannot allow good taste to override, or just because one person who probably needs more space to do and dictate what the city should or should not do. I ask y'all to consider this, it's a hard decision. I've been in y'all's seat, I've heard residents' complaints, I've talked to residents, I've heard them now, once they realize what they're talking about in this five feet from the property line, they have an issue with those. I don't care if they're 14, eight feet, 12 feet, it's the five feet from the property line. Leave it at 30 feet in the setback, I don't care if you put up a 20-foot in setback, outside the setback, setback. Just remember why y'all were elected, for the whole city, not just 50 houses, which equates to 100 signatures of residents. We have a lot more residents, and it does devalue a home. It has, and it will continue to devalue a home. I'm in the business of selling, and believe me, or not me personally, but hiring real estate, and that's the first thing, location, location, location. People bought here for a reason. And to change in midstream just because of a few is not, in my opinion, a wise decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another person with questions or comments? Okay, if we have no further questions, oh, come on, Jesse.
Jesse Carvahalbacki at 100 Chimney Rock Lane. My husband and I have been to several meetings on this matter, we've both spoken before. We moved to Chavano, first of all, I grew up here. We moved here from Houston in hopes to initially grow into our home and eventually have our home hopefully grow with us. My brother lives here, my sister lives here, my parents left and came back, my family, we love Chavano, we, we want to live here and stay here. I feel that the charm and value developed, at least in the A3 section that developed with limited regulation, and I feel that the restrictions on masonry pose a threat to the charm and value, in my opinion. I was trained as a landscape architect, so I have experience in design, in urban design, in city planning. And I feel that these requirements would prevent some vernacular architectural choices that would be appropriate and actually desirable in our neighborhood in terms of quality and aesthetic. As Jason said, I generally agree with Jason. As he said, an attempt to match stone source 50 years ago on our house would be impossible and would result in something that ends up drawing more negative attention. And, I don't know, I think, I think some of these restrictions will ultimately scare away some people like us who want to live here and stay here and appreciate the aesthetic and culture and vibe of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Do we have anybody else that would like to make any, direct any questions or has any comments? Okay, it is now 7:39, we're going to close the Pub of the Carrying portion of the meeting. Brings us to item 6.3, Discussion/Action Ordinance O2017-001, Proposed Amendment to Chapter 6 and Chapter 36 of the City's Code of Ordinances Regarding Accessory Buildings, Outbuildings, and Portable Buildings and the Authorizing of Special Exceptions. This is a first reading. Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay, do we have a motion concerning Ordinance O2017-001? Okay, I will entertain a motion concerning Ordinance O2017-001.
I would like to move we postpone till next month.
Okay, I have a motion to postpone, the motion to postpone takes precedent over all other items before the board. Do I have a, do I have a second on the motion to postpone? Okay, do I have a motion, I have a motion, I have a second on the motion to postpone? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries unanimously. Further consideration of Ordinance O2017-001 is postponed until the next regular City Council meeting, let me clarify that, the next regular City Council meeting, because we may have an enter on the council meeting because of something else. Okay, brings us to item six, I do want to thank everybody who came this evening for this item, thank y'all very much, I'm glad that y'all had an opportunity to speak and to hear each other speak about this important consideration for our community. Item 6.4, Discussion/Action TMLIEBP, Rerate and Establishing Defined Contributions, City Manager, and where's Joe?
We do have Joe Munoz here from the TMLIEBP. So, Joe, if you'll just kind of take a seat real quick and let me do some preliminary stuff, and I'm going to turn it over to you as fast as I can.
Joe, is that Munoz or is it?
Munoz.
Munoz, okay.
Okay, just a little bit of background and history, the city changed to the TMLIEBP Health Insurance in 2015, under some plans called the Consumer Centered Pool Plans. And when we did that, we established a defined contribution level, at that time, of $450 per month per employee. So an employee had a option to pick any number of seven plans, and then based upon the cost of those plans, if he chose a cheaper plan, he could contribute monies into the Health Savings Account or the HRA. Last year, there was a slight increase in the cost of those plans, and the city took action to increase the defined contribution levels to, from 450 to 459. And the increases in the healthcare plans were anywhere from 2% to 3% to 4%, something to that nature. This year, we've been informed that the collective average increase for our plans will be 20%, 20%, so it's a pretty significant increase. And so the reason why we're bringing this to you now, because it's relatively early in the budget process, is because Joe has asked, and the TML folks have asked, that we provide them with a defined contribution amount decision, I think it was July 7th, what was the date actually you were asking for?
July 7th, if possible.
July 7th.
Is July the 7th a hard date, or could we push it back one more week, to the 13th?
You could push it back, as long as there are no plan changes, we would be fine with that.
As in the options that we've chosen as opposed to the contribution that we'd be making?
That's correct.
Okay?
Okay. So, we've provided in your packet, and I'm not going to, I'll turn this over to Joe at some point in time, but there's a rerate notice and benefit verification form, which we won't go over, but essentially based upon the decisions and guidance from council, then, then we'll sign that and we'll provide official notification back to the TML as they finalize the plans. And then we'll go through open enrollment and all the stuff that goes on there. On attachment two, we did provide a Consumer Centered Pool Plan Comparison spreadsheet with the new rates associated with that. And again, I'm not going to go over that in any detail myself. I will probably now, at this point in time, turn it over, I think Laura, if you might be prepared to talk to some of the spreadsheets that were done in the attachments. Laura has taken that information that's been provided by Joe, then she's put it into Excel spreadsheets, then compares each plan associated with the defined contribution level of 459. And she can probably provide some analysis of that. And so, Laura? Well, you can, if you use the mic, I think you can do it there.
Okay, so in your packet, is it on? In your packet, you're...
You got it.
Yeah, it's on. The spreadsheet that I created, we looked at the same spreadsheet last year. So, we had plans, originally we had one through eight plans last year, the one was dropped, we have one through seven. And in the attachment...
In the attachment, it's got the red tabs on it, okay.
So the plan number two is being merged to a new plan, and...
Just a second. I don't have a page that's got a, oh, on the iPad, okay.
On the iPad.
Okay, sorry about that, I thought you were...
It's, it's the second or third attachment.
No, no, no.
So, so the, again, so plan number two is being merged to a new plan that they're offering, and we'll let Joe talk about, a little more about it. But what I've done is I've crossed out the current year, but for illustration purposes so you could see if these people, we had, we actually have two employees on that particular PPO plan, and that's a PPO plan. I have the second, the third column shows a 17, 18, the rate for that new plan. So if they were to move to that specific plan that they're merging it to, that would be their cost changes.
453.94, correct? When you say that...
Yeah, so that, so, yeah, I haven't got, so when, currently, the plan for employee only is $385.38, but again, they're going to be merging that plan to Plan A... But again, they're going to be merging that plan to Plan A. And that employee cost, or employee, employee only cost, not the employee's cost, but is $453.94. And currently, the city pays 459 contribution to everybody on any plan. So, the fourth column, you can see under employee only cost, the change is $68.56. So, currently, that would actually be less money because that plan, they currently have money going to their HRA, which is a health reimbursement account. So, that would be reducing that contribution, which was $73.62 a month, down to 506. So, I'm going to explain this one here before I go to the other ones. When you, the green line is the, again, HRA or HSA, depending on which plan, and how much is put into those particular plans into your bank account. The next one that shows spouse, and it's, the white is actually if the amount that cost is 100% of the employee paid it. So, the spouse plan for that would be seven, the new plan would be $762.08. If they apply their HSA money, which will be the green line, excuse me, gray lines, then that's what those plans would cost. So, it goes the same way, spouse, then if you apply it, child's, if you apply it, family, apply it. So, in this spreadsheet currently, the plans all went up, I mean, our plans that we currently have went up 20%. However, like this plan, if they were to move, there is a larger increase. They could go to a different plan if they so choose. And then also, if our contribution, which is currently $459 that the city puts in, if that contribution is not increased to match the 20%, then anybody that is using those funds to help buy down, their actual cost could be going up more than 20%. And you can see that throughout the sheets. So, again, plan, the next plan, Plan Three, is being merged to Plan Four that we already have. We have six employees on that. And so then, again, same thing, I have the numbers, just to kind of give you a dollar. Next page, or I guess it's pages on there, Plan Four, you can see the changes in it as well. And that particular plan, so if we, the increase, those people will be losing $80.26 into their, to their HRA, based on the cost of that plan. We have two employees, and I tried to, in the very far right column, I put how many employees we have in the plan, and then if there's an employee, the participant's independent coverage. So, it's, on that big plan, we have two employees, employees only, and then we have actually a, excuse me, a child. My top one's wrong, sorry about that. Plan, the new Plan A and B, we have, there's no cost comparison because they're new to us. And again, Joe can, he'll talk more about the new plans and the changes. So, then down to the next plans, which is the CPP7 and CCP8. Those are the high deductible health plans. And that's really the majority of our employees. We've got currently 38 in there, those plans. So, if you look at the high deductible health plan, the current cost on Plan Number Seven is $277.86. It's going, again, it's going up 20%, so that's $333.42. So, if you don't change the contribution, the defined contribution, it'll still be covered 100% for the employees. They won't be having to take money out of their, you know, to pay for health insurance, except for they will have less money in their HSA account. So, you know, and on a high deductible health plan, nothing is covered until you hit your deductible. So, it is kind of significant, actually.
Yeah, and the HRA and the HSA is very significant because that's what people are using for their deductible money over time and their copays.
Yeah, not the HRA, but the HSA. The HRAs have a lower deductible, and so typically... And then these Plan Eight, again, employee cost currently is $250.12, and it's going up to 314. So, it's $50.02 that would be now put towards the cover, the cost of the coverage versus going into an employee's HSA amount. And then these are the plans, you can see the cost increase is pretty significant when it comes to the family plans. Both of the family plans are 35 and 39% increase if they have the money used to be the buy down. Again, if they're not using their buy down money, the plans increase 20%. So, on top of losing $50, $50 to $55. Any questions on...
So, so...
It's kind of...
Yeah, so Bill, there are two issues here, if I'm not mistaken. One is, y'all have a recommendation concerning which plans to offer to the employees. And Mr. Munoz has said that he needs to have that answer by July the 7th, and this is the only meeting that we will have before July the 7th. The second one is, is what we're going to do, if anything, concerning what we are contributing in the contribution portion from the city. Are those the two decisions that we have to make? And do we have to make, can we make that second one at a later date than this evening?
I think I would ask Joe to come up now, it would be good for you to...
Let me make sure I understand the, we weren't proposing to change the plans.
Well, it's, two of them merged, and you're not recommending that any of these plans disappear, and you're not recommending...
But we don't have an option when you're in this pool plan.
Okay.
These are all the new plans.
These are all of the plans, okay.
Yeah, the plans are set now.
And we could take away from the list, but we can't add to it. Oh, we have to offer, okay.
Which is a good thing, that means employees have five.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's...
I misunderstood what Joe said earlier.
Okay, sorry. The plans are set. What happened was, we tried, well, we had several members that wanted to decrease the options under the Consumer Centered Pool Plans. So, they decreased last year, last rerate cycle, they decreased it by one. So, it went down from eight to seven. And this year, they are decreasing from seven to five, which would allow employees to have the option to purchase through the defined contribution three PPO plans that are the standard plans, and then two high deductible health plans that are tied to the Health Savings Account. And on two of those PPO plans, they tweaked the plan itself. So, that's what changed. The high deductible health plan, which is the highest utilized by the city, they left the same. There's no change to the actual plan on those. So, that, again, they are set plans, so those can't be changed. The reason that we have the July 7th date is primarily because we're required by healthcare reform to have everything out to membership within a certain timeframe. And we have to start building our health information technologies so that we can be able to meet those deadlines. That's the reason for that. Our average rate increase overall for the pool, because as most of you may know, you are a part of a pool. So, with being a member of the Intergovernmental Employee Benefits Pool, the overall increase average was 13.1%. And the city of Chavano Park, the reason that they got a 20% is because the loss ratios were above the recommended percentage. 15% is typically or less operating expenses, anything, 85% if you have lower than that. They were already forecasting that you would get a 13.1% increase. However, the highest utilized plans through the city had a loss ratio of a little over 180% just because some high claims, high dollars. So, that was the reason for the average of a 20% increase. The dental plan did not have any changes to the rates nor to the benefits, nor did the vision plan, nor did the life plan. So, those all are remaining the same at your renewal. Let's see. Was there anything else that you wanted me to touch on?
The new Plan A, we can just...
Sure.
Change the options.
The new plan, because they did away with what we call the core plan. The core plan was the highest option that they currently have, meaning that there's no deductible. Well, they are going to remove that plan, and now that it'll have a 200 deductible. But they did increase the benefit percentage from 70 to 80%. So, anyone who is on the core may want to consider moving to that new plan, where there will be a $200 deductible, and benefit percentage again does get bumped up by 10%, okay? They also have the benefit, if they utilize a premium care physician, they also get an increase of 5% additional to their benefit percentage. So, instead of 80, it would be 85%, okay? The P85, 50, 30 is the same plan. So, that's also the 500 deductible, 3,000 out of pocket, and it's an 80/20 plan. They are all 80/20 plans. The third option is a 750 deductible, 4,000 out of pocket, 80/20 plan. And then, of course, the high deductible health plans remain the same, 1,500 deductible, 4,000 out of pocket, 80/20 plan. And then the last option is 2,500 deductible, 3,000 out of pocket, and that's also an 80/20 plan. And those are the two that are eligible for a Health Savings Account.
Okay. Joe, what, what decision is it that we need to provide to you before July the 7th?
If possible, as they mentioned, I believe the defined contribution now is 459. So, what we would need to know to start building your plan through our plan builders is the defined contribution.
Okay, so actually, you're asking for the financial decision this evening. What is the last date?
It doesn't necessarily need to be made this evening. As you said, if you, when is your next meeting?
Bill, when are, when is our next workshop?
We have a workshop scheduled, I believe, the 13th of July.
Okay, the next time that we're going to have a chance to have actually thought about these numbers and considered them is going to be the 13th of July. We can have an answer for you the morning of the 14th.
And that would be fine. Because again, the plans are set, so we can't change the plans.
No, I thought there were two decisions, but there's only one.
That's correct.
The date is July the 13th.
Is it Wednesday? It's a workshop, we'd have to call a special meeting.
We can make a special meeting. Well, we have, who can be here on the 13th? Mike, can you be here on the 13th?
I'm checking right now, July 13th?
Yes. Michelle, Bob?
Yeah, I've got it on my counter, I'm good.
Okay, so...
July 13th is...
Thursday.
Thursday evening, yeah. Okay, we...
Or do we move it to the 12th?
No, this would be a special...
You would just add it to the same...
Yeah, we'd meet at the same time, and we would just do this first.
You'd just come earlier.
That was the day I had a doctor's appointment.
Yeah, that's why we're meeting at 6:00 instead of at 5:00. We're not meeting earlier, we're just going to push this meeting as the first part. Okay? And Mary Ann was available that day as well, yeah. So, is there anything else that y'all would like to add before I entertain a motion to postpone?
Yes.
Yes, Bill?
Because I want to present kind of some of the numbers so that you can think through this as we go. Otherwise, there's no additional information. So, as we looked at this, I'll just kind of say with the 20% increase to the employee health savings deposit, the majority of the members' plans are in, like Joe said, seven and eight. Those have a, an increased cost, which would be a deduction from their health savings accounts of $50 and almost $56, okay? So, if you just, if the council was inclined to match that reduction just for those costs, $56 increase per month per employee would cover the majority of the employers, okay? Employees. If you take a look at the range across the entire piece, and I'll ask Laura to back me up, all the plans have a decrease ranging from that $50 that I'm talking about to $80. So, that's just the employee only cost. And just when we work through the numbers associated with that, if we wanted to match that increase in cost for the 80% of the employees, the majority of the employees, $56 per month would do that. That would increase the defined contribution to 450, from 459 to 515. So, then therefore, the majority of the employees would remain neutral in cost associated with that. As we talked about in the workshop briefly, that doesn't account for the cost increase of those employees that have spouse coverage, dependent coverage, and family coverage. Their 20% of those plans go up, and because their cost is pretty significant, it's a pretty significant cost. But just going back to the increase by $56, just to put a perspective in terms of dollar amount, what does that mean for the city? That would mean $56 times 12 times 49 employees, that's $32,928. Essentially, $33,000 a year. Now, that cost, if you look at the total cost associated with the cost to what we currently play, pay, it's actually only a 12.2% increase in the total cost for health benefits because the 20% increase was related to the employee only cost, not to the employee and the health savings account and the health retirement account or reserve account, HRA.
Would you say that one more time, Bill? Because you've been talking about 20% increase, and now you're talking about a 12.2% increase.
Yeah.
The $32,000 represents a 12.2% increase year over year, is that what you just said?
Yes.
And the, the cost has actually gone up by 20%. So, when we take the last two years' increases, because we had a flat year in between, we're talking about a 14.2% not compound, the compound rate's going to be about 14.3, 14.4. We're talking about over a three-year period of time having a total compound rate of increase of less than 15% based upon an increase of $56. Is that correct?
If I understand your question, when we moved to TML, we were basically, the cost was cost neutral associated with that. And then we had a 2% or 3% increase last year, and now we have a 20% cost increase to the employee only, employee only cost. As Laura pointed out, that 20% also was, was added on to the dependent and the child and the spouse, which, you know, from the, in the terms of employee only, because we're providing $459, when that 20% increase goes up, we're only taxing that increase on, say, 300 or 350, not the 459. And so, that's why when you add just the plan, the plans accountability, yeah, it's 20% if you're just looking at the plans, but if you're looking at what it takes to match the cost offset for the majority of the employees, which would be the $56, that $56 is only a 12% increase over the 459. So, you're not, you know, so, again, there are, there are some plans that went up $80, I can tell you that. So, if, if you applied that logic of $56 to the one or two plans that have the, you know, the $80 difference, then those people will not be cost neutral, they'll be losing, what is it, $24 or something to that nature.
Yeah, you know, if you did, if you did a 20% increase, which is what you said, the blended number is, instead of a 12.2, instead of being $32,000 of increase, it'd be about $52,000 of increase. Now, the thing I'd like for us all to be cognizant of is that if you take a flat year where you have a 0% increase, and then you have a 2%, and then you have a 20%, the compound increase over a three-year period of time is 6.8% compounded, if we bear the entire cost. On a nationwide basis, when you look at all of the premiums paid for everybody under ACA, employers that are paying 6.8% compound increases in their healthcare, I think are probably well, pretty well slim. And if you can find them, I find that remarkable. So, you know, when I'm looking at these numbers, Bill, and you're suggesting that we have a 14.3% increase over this period of time, which comes out to be about a 4.6% compound rate of growth over a three-year period as opposed to 6.8, I think that 6.8 is just an astronomically low cost factor for our citizens. I think that 6.8 is just an astronomically low cost factor for our citizens. And when you add $20,000 to the pot for the staff, I don't know that that is a number that causes me to blush when I go to the citizens and say, "Yeah, your healthcare costs went up $52,000 for 51 employees this next year." But I've interrupted you, I'm sorry to you, I got on my soapbox and I do that periodically. Yeah. I was just thinking about whether that, whether, whether my babbling is on the agenda tonight and I should gravel you as being out of order. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Bill, do you have some other points that you'd like to share with us?
Well, I would like to just kind of get some, I mean, understand. So what is it that you, what more information do you need to make a decision? What would you like staff to do? What are your thoughts? Are you, uh, are you leery of this increase as, as, as kind of a consensus, or is that... Yes.
Yeah, that, I think, I think there's three numbers that we need to be looking at. One is, um, Bill has given us a low number at 12.2%. Uh, I'm recommending that we consider what takes us to that 20% number, and maybe we should consider a third number, which would say, "Well, what is the average that the market is prevailing, uh, has been experiencing over this three-year period of time?" And go with what that average rate of increase was, and maybe that's 7.5% instead of the 6.8% that I was working numbers back off of. Does anybody wanna go lower than 12.5%? Let's, let's just start there. Is there, is there anybody...
What's the significance of that? I thought we were talking about the contribution.
The, the contribution of $56 is a 12.5% increase year over year for all the employees in the aggregate. Okay, so, so, you know, when we're doing limbo, is that as low as we go? Or does somebody wanna recommend that we go lower than a 12.5% increase as far as our city funding?
No, I don't think you wanna go lower.
You don't think you wanna go lower? Okay? Nobody wants to go lower. So then, then the question comes back to, well, we can make some, Bill can come back with a couple of other recommendations and say, "Well, if we went up and, and bore the entire 20%, this is how much we would put in as the, as the city contribution." And you could also come up with a number that is representative of what other employers are, have been bearing over the same three-year period of time. And then we've got three numbers and we can pick from that on June the 13th, July the 13th. Is, is that a workable plan for y'all?
Well, I, I just think whatever it is you, you need to make us be status quo moving forward is what we need to be dealing with. So if the number's 52,000, the number's 52,000.
Okay, I can, I can provide some options and information, supporting information, and we'll, uh, we can do that.
Mike?
The other thing that I would request is input from the employees. What, what, if anything, what opinions they have?
Okay.
Maybe through the department heads or what have you.
Yes, good. We did talk about that, um, we did, and so this is helpful for us to know. I mean, not, like, you're welcome to have any of them speak. I can tell you that, um, the $56 was, well, that's good, but they pointed out that that doesn't cover a, a large percentage of the employees that, um, have dependent care, they're gonna see a significant increase. That's the feedback I got. 56 would be good. Anything additional would be better to, to help offset that cost, which in some cases are pretty significant.
And I'd like to also know what, um, if you can find out generally what some comparable cities are planning to do this year, because always how we compare to what others are offering is a good benchmark.
Okay?
That's, I do have some info, but...
Okay.
It's certainly, it's hard whenever, you know, the different plans.
Yeah.
So I've got some numbers, but they're what the dollars that they contribute.
That's fine. I mean, whatever you think is reasonable.
It's like, yeah, Falcone's has three plans, but they give $575 a month. So you, again, same as ours, same kinda thing. They're not with TML, they're with another company. So, you know, Leon Valley, $579. Casterville, $592.
So even if...
But I don't know, you know, what does that mean, comparable plans, you know? Are they on?
Are they getting 100% of the employee covered? Is it, yeah?
There could be lots of things, but those are the dollars that they are putting for employee. Selma do, is $482.91, and they pay 50% of dependent coverage.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Well, we, we turned away from that two years ago, three years ago, when we went to, "We're gonna fund everybody at exactly the same level because it makes it a little bit easier on picking winners and losers." That we've, you know, every, everybody's an employee, and some people can put away money in an HSA, and someday they'll have kids, and then they're gonna have to use some of that for their, their children, or they get older and they have all their kids out of the house, and now they can be contributing for an HRA, I'm sorry, toward their HRAs, so that they can take it with them.
HSA is the one you take with you.
Oh, HSA, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Just that's something we put in there. But to think on that level, the HSA, the both plans we have, the deductible and out-of-pocket in a year, we're not contributing what that costs. So, you know, every time I go to the doctor, I use my HSA money. It's not something I can save because I don't pay a zero co-pay or, you know, I pay whatever the rate is. And it's discounted, of course, because they go through that process and how they work with doctors. But every time I go, I pay, and so...
Okay. Are we, are we in a good place now? Okay. Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it. Uh, thank you for all your help in the TML plan. Uh, the TML plan has been a great deal, I believe, for our communities.
Thank you very much. And if you, if you need additional information for your meeting on the 13th, just, just let me know, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Uh, item 6.5, discussion action, purchase additional water rights in lieu of renewal of existing Edwards Aquifer water leases. Bill, can we get, can we get this, like, in three minutes?
Well, I think it probably deserves a little bit more time than that, but I, I'll try to abbreviate. What you have in your packet is a lot of background information as to when the water, the city acquired water rights, and then how it proceeded and all that stuff, and I won't go through the, the whole timelines. But I will say, and I'll just start out with the bottom line first. The Water Advisory Committee's been, um, discussing this for about a year, generally speaking, and then in April and May, staff provided detailed analysis to them, which resulted in them recommend, making a recommendation. They voted to approve a recommendation to purchase 13 acre feet a year for the next 10 years, which would accumulate 130 acre feet in lieu of the existing water leases we have. So since I've been here the last couple of years, we've actually, um, we've actually let leases, um...
Expire.
Expire. And we actually came to the council last year's budget process, and we got permission to renew a lease this year. But as we went through that process of doing that, we delayed and delayed, and then we've chosen not to do that because we don't have a need for it, which then brought us into the whole question, "Well, if we don't have a need for that, let's question the need for all our water rights." And then, you know, so skipping into, um, the discussion point, I'll go right to the, um, the second page of your, your packet. We provided a table which summarized the water usage for each, uh, for each year, starting from 2013. We looked at the total Edwards Aquifer acre feet allowed versus what we used, what would be used in, in Stage 4, and then we also then added a Trinity. And so just to kinda review the bidding, last year we were authorized 10,050 acre feet. We only used 445. If the Stage 4 was in place the entire year, we would've only been authorized 630, but we only used 430, uh, 45. We also had the Trinity, um, operational. Last year was a tough year because it was out for almost half the year, and we've augmented, uh, started to augment, uh, the Trinity use. So the difference is that we've, we've now refurbished the, the Trinity. The Trinity's in really pretty good shape, and it's contributing a lot, especially since we've, Brandon's got it fixed. But, but there is this challenge, and to, to be completely frank with you, that the Trinity may last 20 years, it may last 10, and it may last five because of the way that the silt, um, built up into it fairly quickly initially, and then we had to reacidize that. There's a danger that that could happen. We think that by using the, uh, the stainless pipes, that we're gonna cause less reaction, and it's gonna have extended thing. But as we looked at this, um, the real deal is we take the money allocated towards leasing and we allocate it towards purchase. And, um, when you do that, you're letting your leases expire. You're actually in a, a little bit of a vulnerable period. But as, you know, the, kinda the bottom line is, we're least vulnerable now because we have the Trinity and it's operational. And so, um, over time, you have more chances that the Trinity would, um, would fail. And the, it may be cost prohibitive, it's probably cost prohibitive to redrill. I mean, if you're talking about $2 million. So every, if you were to purchase 13 acre feet, after one year, you'd have 13 more, and then after two, you'd have 26, then you'd have 39, and then pretty soon, you're really, um, reducing your risk associated with what's going on. We've got a number of charts there. We looked at a, uh, we, we actually looked at four options of purchasing and then keeping a lease. We met in April and, and the Water Advisory Committee said, "Now, go back and give us a fifth option," which would be let all the leases expire, and then to, uh, and then just to take all that money and allocate it towards purchasing, which we did, and that's what they ultimately approved. So that's, that's page three or four, and it has option five, and it talks about that. And ultimately, um, in the last paragraph, I'll just kinda work through this. Option five is purchasing 13 acre feet for 10 years, letting them expire. The chart shows only the first three years, but the option releases the 2016, 2017, and, uh, later on, the 2019 leases. You take a look at all those costs that we would need, and you're really talking about, um, a wash in terms of $71,000 that you're saving in lease payments you're not having to pay that could be allocated towards the 13 acre feet. So again, you told me to keep it short. I think I probably went more detail you wanted. There's more details that we can answer associated with that. I'll, I'll just kinda summarize that. You may already have specific questions in mind. I know Oliver Colomere, Colomere was on the, the WAC committee at the time, and so he's been through this process, and I'll pause for there.
Yeah. Uh, before we entertain a motion for something, uh, do we have a recommendation from you and Brandon?
Our recommendation's to approve option five, which would purchase 13 acre feet for the next 10 years and release the 2016, 17, and later the 2019, uh, leases, which are really about 300 and plus acre feet of leases. And, and the only caveat I have on that is if we go down this road and then you find that, well, you need more leases, I do believe that it's fairly easy. Might take a year, but you can then, um, you can lease more.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion concerning this item?
I'll move that we approve the option five as requested.
Purchasing 13 acre feet per year for 10 years and releasing the 2016 leases of 171.56 acre feet, uh, and the 2017 leases of 131.75 acre feet, and later the 29, the, the 2019. Okay, I'm assuming that you're only intending to, um, release the 2016 and 2017 leases because the 2019 is for another budget year for council, uh, and that your, your intention is to authorize the 13 acre feet for this one year. Is that correct? Because we can't commit for the other years.
We can release, can make, give guidance to release 2019 lease, or we have to wait till 2019 to make that call.
Well, you can do it now, but you'd have to, you'd have to have some specific language in your agreement that says that it's, the contract's subject to funding.
We've already funded it, and so the intent is to let it expire without...
Renew it, we're not going to renew it.
So I don't have to take any action to let it expire.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought the question, can, can you enter into an agreement?
Can, can we make a motion right here?
Can we make a motion to get rid of our 2019 lease?
Or is that something I have to do in 2019? So you release the 2019 lease of 100 acre feet later?
Oh, yeah, right. You can't, they can't bind some future council by doing that today. You can, they can do it now, but they could, it could be reversed.
Yeah, well, let's just, let's just keep it simple. Okay, so...
And the intent of this really is going to, this is who we're tracking, is gonna be to execute this in the budget process.
Okay, yes. So, so Mike, um, if I could restate your motion to make sure that I'm clear on what you said. Approve option five, purchasing 13 acre feet per year, or acre, uh, purchasing 13 acre feet this budget cycle. Is this the 2016, 20, or the 2016, 2017 year? Or is this the 2017, 2018 year? Are we using this year's money, Bill, or are we using next year's money?
It doesn't, it's, it's both here.
Okay, so, uh, purchasing 13 acre feet in the 2016, 2017 budget year and releasing the 2016 and 2017 leases. Is that correct?
16's already gone, so...
16's already gone, so releasing...
17, we haven't renewed.
Releasing the 2017 lease. Okay? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second on Mike's motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from the other Mike. Okay, we're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign the motion carries. Item 6.6, discussion action, authorizing the city's manager to contract for online tree permitting and approval of ordinance O-2017-015, amending Article 2, Oakwell Prevention, Section 6, Section 14, 21E, to account for expenses in online tree permitting. This is considered an administrative ordinance and on passage will be final this evening. Bill?
Well, um, beginning last year's budget cycle, we've talked about, you know, part of our goals and objectives and objectives was to look at, um, online surveys and payment capabilities. I, my regulation believes tree permitting was one of those things that were addressed. As we went through, um, earlier in the year, we initially, um, started working on annual contract fee, um, registration, and we tackled that piece of that, and we didn't tackle the tree licensing piece. But, but boy, July has jumped on us and we hadn't addressed that. And, and so then we looked at, well, do we have the ability just to do it within the intent of the council? Probably so in terms of going online, but taking the receipts, um, we weren't clear on that. And so when we looked at the, the Oakwell Fund and the language associated with that, you know, it basically said the revenues from these permits, as well as the fines collected for non-compliance, will be, will be located in a designated fund to assist city residents in defraying cost. But it didn't really address the expenses, you know, any expenses could be used to, to work through all that. We did, um, work through the same provider that works contracting and civil, uh, systems. And, uh, they've informed us they're capable of doing the online, um, tree permits, but at a small cost. And so, um, we just didn't think that the Oakwell Fund monies and the way it was written allowed for the purpose of defraying those costs associated with the permits. And so what we did was, uh, bottom line is we have a recommendation, which in one of the subparagras, accounts for the cost by putting parentheses minus expenses in terms of the use for those, uh, of those funds. So that's why we thought it would be administrative in nature because really it meets with the intent, and there's no, I don't think there's a controversial issue associated with that. We've coordinated with Civil Systems, um, we're ready to go online with that and, and work through that. Did I miss anything, Laura, or, or, we, did we wrap that up?
Yeah, just to kinda explain it real quick. It, citizens will go online to register for tree trimming permits. So will contractors. Fairly simple, but there are several screens they'll go through. It will help track, because currently when y'all changed it to the citizen, permit's good for a year. We don't have a sufficient software to track. The permit MD doesn't, doesn't work quite that way. And so this will help, this will send a reminder approximately a month before their permit's up. So it'll say, "Hey, you need to, you know, re-register or pay, or pay your new fees." So it, it has the ability for contractors, you know, they're only good for 10 days?
No, a year.
Oh, contractors.
For contractors?
14 days.
So, so it'll, you know, it'll have the address that they're there, the ability for the code enforcement officer to drive around, look online, because it's an online service that is, you can just log on. So that'll help, because currently it's pretty cumbersome. It's going to be, this first bit, getting people used to logging on and getting registered. It's going to take a little bit. There may be some people that are going to be upset with it.
Well, can, can Marissa do that from the front desk in the beginning?
No, you have to do it yourself, because it's tied to your, you, uh, your, you get a user ID and your pa- email, and you have a password. So it's your account, your specific account. So, um, the citizens would have to do it themselves. Um, you can do it on your phone. It has the app, you know, the way the app works for the phone.
Well, not all of our citizens have computers.
Really? Yeah, I.
Oh, yeah, we, there's, there's some people here that don't have computers.
Marissa and I talked about it, and a large majority of the ones that don't, that are elderly or that don't use computers, typically contractors are coming out and doing it. So, um, it'll help, you know, again, right now, it's pretty cumbersome. You know, she's making five copies, and it gets crazy in July, so this will really, it will, this month will not be. I promise you, July will probably be worse than it normally is for her, it, but in the end, it'll be better.
Okay, great.
So, and there is unfortunately, there's a cost, because they, they will running the credit cards through their system. It's not on ours. They'll deposit the money into, we have actually created a separate bank account for the contractor registration that we just started using, um, so that money gets deposited into a separate bank account, so it doesn't get messy in my general fund, um, operating account. And so, you know, they, they bear all the cost of the credit card fees. We won't be processing any of that anymore. So again, at first, there'll be some, yeah, but I think it'll be better. Again, people will be reminded, hey, it's time.
Yeah, great. Uh, Mike, do you want to make a motion, or do you want to go through the discussion and just ask some more questions from Laura at the end?
How about both?
Let's make a motion, and then you can ask your questions.
I move we authorize the city manager to contract for online tree permitting and approval of ordinance O 2017 dash 015, amending section 1421E to account for expenses in online tree permitting.
Okay. Uh, who's going to second this for me?
I'll second.
Bob is second of the motion. Okay, but, uh, Mike, go ahead and ask your question.
Um, when we do this, what will happen to those of us who already have tree permits? Will they automatically be rolled in, or will we have to create an account, or what? Or is it too early to answer that?
Well, no, yes. You, you'll eventually, yes, you're going to have to create an account. Um, we had, we ran a report, I believe we had 40. So our intent was to send letters to those 40 people and say, can you register? And then we'll have to get civil system to help remove the fee. But that way you're, they can get it set up and, um, try to get it in the system, because yeah, they, luckily, it was not very many. It was something we did look at, because we were like, how is this going to affect?
So it's you and me and 38 other people? Okay, okay. That, that, that helps out a whole lot, you know?
It, it, yeah, so.
I, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do, too. Perfect. Okay, is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign the motion carries. Item, um, item 6.7, Budget Calendar. Bill? Uh, just a note, before we go to the budget calendar, uh, the mayor will be calling a special city council meeting at six o'clock on July the 17th. So just as a point of information to everybody. We can't discuss the mayor having that meeting as a part of this item, because it's not.
What date?
July the 13th.
Oh, I thought you said the 17th.
July the 13th at seven, at seven o'clock, at six o'clock.
What we just talked about earlier.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought it was a new meeting. Okay. Um, in May, council approved the first two budget workshops. We've executed those. One was on the 14th of June, and the, and the other one was the 26th. So we're on track, and actually, it's going very well. Um, I'm not, to the specifics of this, um, at this council meeting, we should consider the rest of the budget calendar. That's, that's what this is really getting at, and a lot of these dates become pretty hard here. Um, so specifically from the staff standpoint, we need to, we need you to confirm the July 13th workshop, which, um, we discussed last month, but we, we want confirmation associated with that. And then currently, the city manager's budget scheduled for Thursday, the, August the 3rd. And that's about the, that's the earliest we can do that based upon what we project, receiving, um, the effective and the rollback worksheet, worksheet associated with that and being able to push that out. And it's going to be a difficult, uh, three or four days, and Laura and I have been talking about that. Traditionally, we have waited a week, um, after presenting that, because that meeting is pretty much a lot of presentation and discussion. There might be some questions from you, but, um, you know, elements of the budget you will be familiar with, but other elements you won't, and you'll take a look at that. But on the 10th, you're required to come back in, or, or soon afterwards, come back in and take a record vote on the tax rate. So that meeting is scheduled the 10th. We're looking to validate that date. Now, I sent to city council earlier this last week, um, a request from Alderman Simpson to move that from the 10th to the 9th to accommodate his schedule. So you should have received that, and if, 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 and we, we can talk about that later on. And then we also have planned workshops on the 16th and the, and the 28th, which can be planned and then canceled if you, if they need to be. And, and those dates, the 16th would be obviously out of cycle, but the 28th would be tied in with a city council meeting. And so really, you're talking about between now and the time that you actually potentially are going to have the first reading of the adopted budget, which would be in September, four workshop or, uh, meeting opportunities. One, again, July 14th, I mean, July 13th, then the, the August 3rd, the August 9th or 10th, the August 16th or 28th. So that would be five opportunities, four workshops, and then city manager proposed budget. And, um, in your schedule, we talked about doing the first reading, um, on September 11th, it's a special council meeting. And then there, in the council packet, there was several options, and I, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, that we can move the city, you know, in an effort to get the budget passed in time to give it to the, to the, uh, Bear County Collector Assessor, and they request it be done so appropriate notice be provided to residents on the tax rates. If we waited to our regularly scheduled meeting, which would be, uh, I think the 28th of September, then we wouldn't have it in time to meet their deadline.
Okay. So, so Bill.
September 25th.
Marianne's not here. We'd like for her to have an opportunity to participate, and it sounds like we're all going to be here on the 13th. Could we add to a special workshop or, or an action item, uh, to our, um, special meeting, the additional dates that you're talking about without interfering with our budget calendar? So, so Laura, is it possible on July the 13th to set up the dates other than August the 3rd and August the 9th? From a, from a calendaring standpoint?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. These, really, nothing's changed in the last, in the last two months, but, yeah, we just.
It's the same schedule.
No, no, I meant, but, uh, so that Marianne has a chance to participate. You know, we, we can set the 3rd and the 9th right now, and we can, on the, on the 13th, we can set the, the balance of the calendar so that everybody can participate in the balance of the calendar.
The 9th, the meeting on the discuss the tax rate, that's what kicks off the timeline and the, the days. So if you pick the 9th, if you go with the 9th, that can, we can.
We can still work with everything else.
And, and just one thing to make sure we're clear. Okay, I said the 28th of September, but the regular scheduled meeting is the 25th.
Twenty fifth.
Okay. And so at times, and we've done this two ways, we've moved the regular scheduled meeting in this case, um, would be to the, from the 28th to the 18th is a course of action, or 25th to the 18th. Okay? And we could do the entire, um, September meeting there, if we go from there.
Yeah.
You know, when we do that, we typically don't have the city attorney there. He, we get a representative there, which has not been an issue, but that's a consideration. So do we have one meeting? We'd have a meeting on the 11th, the 18th, or the, and the 25th, or do we have a meeting on the 11th and the 18th? And I realize you're going to make that decision at the next meeting, but I want you, this is an opportunity to present this and say, you know, for example, when we did the May meeting, we moved the May regular scheduled meeting early to accommodate the, uh, the ratification of the elections, and that put it into the tight timeline. And then we had a lot of things going on there. Staff can support you either way, but, you know, the real question for you to think about is, do you want three meetings, which includes the regularly scheduled meeting on the 25th on the fourth Monday of the month? Or do you want to consolidate that to two meetings and you move that up? Don't need to answer it now, but we would need to answer it, and we're presenting that so that you're really thinking through that.
Okay. So, so the question to council is, do we want to set the, uh, the 3rd and the 9th? Or do we want to go beyond setting the 3rd and the 9th and set more dates?
Set the 3rd and 9th and do Marianne an opportunity.
Is, is that the consensus?
I'm texting her right now.
Well, and we should just wait until, uh, wait a month anyway, because we don't know what, you know, every time we cancel a meeting, then we think, oh, we could have had it and been discussing stuff if we go eliminating meetings.
We, we can wait. I mean, I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm taking this opportunity to make sure I articulate that fairly clearly so that you're thinking about it before we come back the 13th, and then I, you know, we're.
Yeah, no, the 13th, we'll make some more decisions. This will be an, uh, I plan on including this on the special agenda for that, uh, for that meeting. Okay, do we have a motion to, uh, set August the 3rd and the 9th?
So we're moving the 10th to the 9th.
Moving the 10th to the 9th.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mike, um, Colomere has made the motion for the, uh, the 3rd and the 9th.
It looks, it's the 3rd and the 9th of.
August.
August.
From the 10th, okay.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion from Mike Colomere. Do we have a second?
Second.
Michelle is second in the motion. Do we have any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign the motion carries. Item seven, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Uh, does anybody have any items from 7-1 through 7-6 that they would like to pull for consideration? Mike?
Uh, 7.5.1, please.
Okay. Uh, so we will now proceed to item 7.5.1. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to pull from this? Okay. Bill?
Yes, Mayor. We, we put this in as an agenda item, because we had a citizen ask, um, okay, tell me again what the TCE water notice review was, and then an opportunity to explain it to the citizens who may be watching this tape, et cetera. And so, um, on April 27th, the city did receive a letter from TCEQ stating, we didn't collect enough routine water samples in the month of July through August 2016, and that was a violation of what's called reporting requirements. And then it required us to send a letter out to everybody. So what happened? I mean, that's kind of the question. Well, um, the city took and submitted one water sample to the testing lab, and those samples are routine, and they can test, test the water for contaminants. But, um, TCEQ had been going through this, um, total chloroform rules change. We were required to submit a plan associated with that. We interpreted the plan as to requiring only one sample, and therefore we submitted one sample, when in fact, um, the requirement, and it wasn't really clear, was for two samples, and so we fell short of that. And, um, again, it was an administrative area. There were no issues with the water or health, public health concerns. This, this coincided with a change in their rules in which we were asked, and every city was asked, to submit a plan associated with that. It wasn't like we submitted the plan, we got feedback, and they approved the plan, and then we started executing. The actual notice came, and then the requirement came, and this was in the transition of public works directors, and we had very little time to actually submit it before we started executing it. I will tell you that, um, and I can tell you the specifics if you want any more, but it had to do with the number of residents served versus the number of, um, individual water meters and filters, and we only required one based upon the number of water meters, but required two based upon the number of residents. And that's, that's essentially it. Again, no health issues, no problems. In fact, it was the public works director that identified the change required, and he started, uh, making, without any input from TCEQ, he, he self-corrected and started in, in September, taking two. So again.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions to extend to Brandon or to Bill? Okay. Uh, we'll now proceed to item eight. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussions on these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do I have a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.4 and items 8.6 through 8.11 on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, I would make that motion if we can pull 8, 8, and 8, 9.
Okay. Uh, you've had a request to pull items 8, 8, and 8, 9. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.4, 8.6, 8.7, 8, 10, and 11?
I'd like to amend that and pull 8.7.
And 8.7, okay. So do I have a motion to approve 8.1 through 8.4, 8.6, 8, 10, and 8, 11?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mike Simpson on 8.1 through 8.5, 8.6, I'm not, through 8.4, 8.6, 8.10, and 8.11. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Michael Colomere. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign the motion carries. We're now going to proceed to item 8.5.
8.7.
8.7, I'm sorry, 8.7.
Uh, I just think this is something that shouldn't be on the consent agenda and that we need to discuss. I'm, I'm just confused about why we're doing this.
Good question. Okay, so we actually had, um, some recent code infractions with pools, and during the investigation of that, Chief Lacy determined that we were, our ordinances were not in compliance with the, um, local government code. Okay, so.
Health and safety code.
Health and safety code. Okay, so.
Yeah.
Local government code and the health safety code, I guess, too. Both of them work side by side. Essentially, um, section 757 dot 003, and I do believe that is of the health safety code.
It is.
Requires that pools be, and these are pools in public places, be 48 inches in your outside perimeter. Okay? Our pool restrictions, our, our pool ordinance says you must have a yard enclosure that is 40 inches. And so at first glance, you would say, well, okay, that only, 48 only applies to public, and so we're, we're okay, we have 40. But in your local government code, basically.
What section of the local government code?
214, sec- subchapter C, basically, um, authorizes the city.
Bill, 2, 2, 2.14.
No, 2 and 4, chapter 24.
214.
After 214.
No, it's, sorry. 214, subchapter C.
Basically, 214 says you can, cities can adopt minimum standards for full, um, pool fences and enclosures, and does not really state the difference between is limited to public and private. But if we choose to adopt regulations for pool enclosures as defined, uh, by the Health and Safety Code, section 557, then this, the standards apply both, um, for private and, and, and public. Okay? So again, we reread this many, many times. We've stepped this to, this part to the city attorney, and, uh, and there's case law associated with this that says, yes, in fact, if, you don't have to adopt a, a, a pool enclosure code, but if you do, then you must adopt it such that it meets with the Health Safety Code, which is the 48 inches. We have a 40-inch, um, We have a forty-inch ordinance now, and so then, attorney's opine was that we're not in compliance with the state statute.
Okay.
So that's the essential, and I received your question, Mayor.
Yeah.
I did. The question then is, which we don't have the answer, but not without some consideration of that, just, it's more complicated than just a simple answer, was, okay, we adopt this now, then what happens to those folks that have-
Forty or less.
Have forty right now, because they're in compliance? Again, we've got a lot of things going on, I got the question, I think, late last week, and then I sent that to the attorney as well as today, and he and I have been talking back and forth, and it takes a little bit more time for us to answer whether or not, how we deal with a non-conforming use if this is passed.
Okay, do we have, do we have some type of consideration to postpone consideration of this?
There you go.
Mike?
I move, we postpone to our next scheduled coun, council.
Regularly scheduled.
Regular, scheduled council meeting.
We have a motion to postpone until our next regularly scheduled council meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Michelle has seconded the motion to postpone, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion is postponed. Items eight point eight. Bill?
Okay. Item eight, Bear Metro nine one one, this comes up every year. They provide us a budget, I think I provided it to you, that budget is a one-page budget. In the past, I'll remind council that we've gone back to Bear nine one one and said, hey, we want to see more detailed budget transparency of that. Their response was, we provided to you a very detailed accounting summary, financial statement summary, of which it details in past year what's going on. I have that available, it's been provided to us for last year, so it obviously doesn't provide any information in terms of this year. The one-page budget, you've seen it, doesn't provide a lot of detail, but it is what it is. So, they, they routinely ask municipalities for their concurrence, it's not required, they're gonna probably pass it anyway, but, you know, I'm, I'm providing an opportunity for council to take an action, or to not take action.
Okay, just a note on Bear Met nine one one, before we take a, action or no action on this item, we were contacted as a point of information concerning their cooperation with the city, and I'll gavel myself out of order here in a second by Will Hurd's office asking for additional space. I put them in touch with Jimmy Houselocker, who has provided an accommodation. The mayor is out of order. I just wanted to let y'all know that they were cooperative with us, as far as taking care of our congressional district. But we have a budget proposal, do we have a motion to approve the budget as provided by Bear Net, Bear Metro nine one one? Bob has made a motion to approve the budget as provided, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Michelle, do we have any discussion?
I think it's the least transparent group, government group ever, but, okay.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries. Item eight point nine, Bear Appraisal District Annual twenty eighteen Proposed Budget. Bill?
Similar situation. We received a letter with a-
I didn't get contacted by these, I didn't contact these people for a favor, so I just want to let you know that.
We have a letter, we have a preliminary appraisal district budget. They've got a period of time for review, they've asked for review and for consideration to accept their budget. I can tell you that I'm not familiar with the budget, hadn't done a whole lot of research associated with it, there is a lot more detail in this budget than there is in the Bear nine, Metro nine one one budget. They provide a process executive summary, list of consolidated revenues and expenses, and that's about to the extent that I can answer those questions.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Bear Appraisal District Annual twenty eighteen, twenty, seventeen, twenty eighteen Proposed Budget?
So moved.
We have a motion from Michelle to approve the budget. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Bob has seconded the motion, is there further discussion? Mike?
Yeah, the reason I asked that we pulled this out is that they, they've got a provision that they can reprogram their, their monies anytime they want to, and there's some costs in here that are just outrageous, like fifteen hundred dollars per computer, five hundred dollars per computer screen, that just, to me, screams that they're, they're padding their budget there, that they can then move it someplace else, so. Some of their costs were just, in my view, really outrageous, because I can go to Best Buy and do a lot better than that, so, that's my concern.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries. Brings us to item nine, adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn from Michelle, do we have a second? Bob has seconded the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned.